...work she was doing.
Yep, Ellie Groden up at UMaine and her grad student Carla Boyd were doing, um, nobody, nobody researches brown tail. The last heavy research on brown tail was in the seventies. And that was quite a while ago. So Ellie was picking up the reins and beginning to study brown tail and try to find novel solutions. So Ellie retired in August. She is sort of still involved, but her replacement Angela Mack just started at UMaine. She's trying to get her lab up and running, but she will be taking the reins for brown tail.
I gotta get it all developed. Do you have one last question from Pat or you want to comment?
I can address this pretty efficiently because I've talked to every town manager in Southern Maine, probably 12, 15 of them. The, there was the air spraying, there was a $9,000 contribution to, as far as Eleanor Groden went for research. That's something that's possible from a town perspective. I believe the most immediate solution, which is, and I'll agree with Shane, it is better at the moment than my pie in the sky idea that doesn't exist. And I've already formed in this town, a coalition of the willing, you know, some of which are, you know, calling Shane right now because the only thing that can be done right now is basically people banding together, especially those with a little bit greater of a resource. I've tapped, you know, some of the people that I'm working with and working for on Bayview Street on other things and banded them together to try and as well as Tom Rodman, who owns the former Fox Hill, is also involved. And Leslie, I can't remember her last name from the watershed association, all trying to basically pool funding to hire arborists to mechanically prune concentrate areas to try and knock down the, and really, and that's really not something the town can do. The town really, to, to address this from a monetary perspective, it's, it's unmanageable. It's, it's a lot of money and it would be hiring arborists and stuff like that. And it's not even your property. So.
That's right.
You know, it's the individual homeowners, it's associations of people essentially that would band together resources, hire arborists who would do the mechanical pruning and injections as it stands right now.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you, Tom, for coming very much. You appreciate it.
A good school board meeting.
One last little plug since we have the forestry page up. So type on, right on frequently asked questions.
Okay.
Where the cursor was. So we created a frequently asked questions website last spring. So it'll bring you to a.
It's taking me.
It's up at the top. Yeah.
Oh, oh, geez, sorry.
So we created this frequently asked questions website, covers everything from biology to public health impacts, dropdown menus, bullet pointed answers, tons of great information, spread around to your neighbors. It'll help a lot.
Thank you, Tom. We're gonna move on. We're gonna move on now. But thank you very much. It was very helpful. By the way, this is not the end of it. We're gonna bring this to the table again as we get into spring and talk about what we see is actually occurring. So we just wanted to introduce this because we still have a little time to do stuff before middle of April. It ain't much, but it's very little much. Thank you very much, Tom. Thank you very much.
There's one thing, one thing that I would be willing to help out if you guys had hot target areas that I would be personally, I would help inject.
Thank you, Shane. We really appreciate your help. We were seriously, no, seriously. No, thank you very, very much. I appreciate what you're already doing. It's very, very communal. Thank you very much. The next item to, I'm gonna combine Jeremy, I'm gonna combine two items in the agenda because they're both public hearings. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There's two public hearings that are separated. One is for the zoning ordinance, the other one for the, the application for the Blue Harbor Inn. So we're gonna open a public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to, for the select board to take comments from the public on the matter at hand. In this case, we have two.
Do you want to let people leave that wanted to leave?
People can leave if they want to.
Okay, just, I don't know.
I was hoping they'd stay.
Oh, maybe they will stay, but I just, just to give people that.
Yeah, I, Allison, comment if anybody would like to leave, please, please feel free, but thanks for coming. I didn't think we were chaining them here, but it's okay.
No, I mean, just sometimes you will.
Back to the public, that's quite all right. That's, yeah, we'll stop that. Back to the, back to the public hearing, the purpose of the public hearing. No, it's over. No, it's over. The purpose of public hearing is for the select board to get the, can I have everybody's attention, please?
Maybe you're trying to leave.
Are you trying to leave? Then that's fine. But we're trying to get to, get some business done, if you don't mind. Again, the purpose of the public hearing is the select board that takes public comments on the matters at hand. I will open the public hearing to anybody who would like to speak for, against, or just to the item at hand. Whenever anybody from the public has had an opportunity to speak, I will close all the public discussion. We ask anybody from the public to be brief, to the point, and respectful. After I close public hearing, the select board will deliberate on the matter and will not take any more public comment unless the select board member has a question of a person who has spoken from the public. So the first item that we have a public hearing on tonight is the, regarding the proposed Camden zoning ordinance amendment, which would be proposed for our June town meeting vote, which is to amend Article 12, Section 8 site plan review of the Camden zoning ordinance to clarify and expand upon and define what constitutes a variety of modifications to an approved site and to require ongoing compliance with the latest dated approved site plan approvals. That modification has been in our package. Jeremy, do you want to speak to it, please, first?
Sure. Thank you. So one of the things, first things I did when I came to the town of Camden, I started going through the zoning ordinance and looking just how things were done. And we have a section, current section, which is about site plan review. And this is really how the planning board or the code officer or planning staff have to review proposed changes to someone's approved site plan. And it, it really doesn't cover the issues very well currently. And what it also doesn't do is, it does not require that, specifically require that someone who gets site, a project that gets site plan review to always keep their site consistent with that approved site plan. I think people think it's implied, but there's nothing in the ordinance that says, once you get site plan approval, you gotta stay in compliance with it. And currently, under the ordinance, the only way to, there's, again, there's no real definitions to any of this, but it says the code officer can approve and allow minor field adjustments. It doesn't indicate what those are. And then it says that the planning board may allow amendments to an approved site plan without requiring a new site plan application, which is very vague if you go through this. So I brought to the planning board a, I think, a, a good revision to this, which would require, which would do two things. It requires three, three things, well, many things. Requires, again, that the site stay in compliance with the latest dated approved plan. And it allows projects to be approved if they're proposing some minor changes. One way to do a minor change would be a minor field adjustment. And this, these are typical things like this would be if a sewer line shows on a site plan or storm line shows on a site plan to be in a certain location. If, for whatever reason, things happen out on a site, whether they run into ledge or they just run into some issues, you know, technically they need to be put at where the site plan, the planning board approved it. So what this does, this allows the code officer just to approve those as minor field adjustments, very easy. And then there's this other provision for minor revisions. And these are, these are changes to a site plan that would add 200 square feet or less. So say, for instance, a project got approved and the designer, for some reason, forgot to include a entry vestibule on the project. Technically, they'd have to go back to the planning board for a very small entryway. So what this section does is it allows the code officer and myself and Public Works and Fire to review that proposed change and then approve that as a minor revision. And then the next section, what that would do would allow, so yeah, if you go down a little more, just allows the planning board to hear minor site plan, or site plan amendments is what we're calling them. And you would have to go back through. So if it doesn't meet the, if it doesn't, if it's not a minor field adjustment, if it's not a minor revision, but it doesn't trip a brand new site plan, we're, public hearing and all that is required. This would allow the planning board to hear those changes, which would be somewhere between 200 square feet and 1,000 square feet, which would be the difference. That's what it does. Planning board was super psyched about it and so is the code officer because the ordinance is very unclear and does not provide a lot of guidance currently. This fixes that. A lot of communities have very similar ordinances to this for changes to site plans. Bill Kelly reviewed it, the town attorney. He thought it was great, had no issues with it. Well, he did have one, because originally I included, the staff that would look at this would be the planning board chair. And he said, you gotta take that out because the planning board chair doesn't have the authority to do that type of review. And understood.
Like the select board chair doesn't have any real power, right?
Except over you.
Except to, except to move the meeting on. So, sorry, Bob. I had to do that. They had to do that. But that's what this does. The planning board had a hearing on this on January 9th. It was a while ago. No one came, spoke in favor or against it. And they voted unanimously that you ought to move this to voters in June.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to address this ordinance change? Not seeing any hands. I will close the public hearing portion of this item and revert to the select board deliberation. Anybody from the select board has any comments besides Mark?
Yes. I attend most of the planning board meetings. I've watched the discussion on this. And I think that simplify what Jeremy just gave us in detail, it strengthens our, our rules, clarifies them and simplifies them so that it, it works all the way around. And I'm willing to make a motion that we, that we approve for the, approve for the, approve the, the Camden zoning ordinance amendment for the June town meeting.
I wanted to say something, but.
We're in a discussion.
Okay.
But we're missing a member anyway, so we have to wait a second.
Oh, that's true.
But we can, you want a second, give them a discussion.
Sure.
It's up to you.
Yeah, I was just, it was faster than I.
I'll repeat it when Jenna comes back.
Second.
Let's, let's have a discussion.
Okay. I mean, I, yeah, it's not really detailed, but I guess, and what I have is mostly a comment about the planning board process in general. It, it's always fun, watching the meetings, it always feels like it's a good process. But the lack of posting minutes and agendas and backup material on the website has been such a persistent problem that it's impossible for the public to follow along. It's impossible for me to follow along. The select board has a very clear process where we always, we post the agenda and then all of the backup materials. And it's a, I'm, I haven't, I'm certain it's a real pain in the neck for Janice sometimes to go through all of that. But it, it always, for the most part, ends up in this big packet that everybody can have access to. And the, the planning board, it's just like no information anywhere. And so I feel really frustrated by that because it's hard to, to be able to share these drafts of things. The only time you ever, you see it is when it finally comes to this stage where it's at the select board level. But then it's too late to make, oftentimes too late to make substance, any change. So I guess I just have an objection to the overall.
Okay, fair.
Efficiency.
Fair. So a couple of things. The minutes have been an issue. The minutes are rapidly being completed, I will tell you that. And they should be posted within the next couple of weeks for all of these meetings. Just letting you know that.
Over a year behind. I don't even, and the agendas.
Understand.
Don't even get posted on the website.
The agendas for the planning board are always forwarded to where they need to be. And I will make sure that they get out there beyond that because they are sent to Janice, they are sent, they're posted wherever they need to be. They're posted in our office.
Posted on the website.
Understood.
Packet, too, of information, whatever. I understand that sometimes you can't get every single plan in there maybe, but.
That's true.
Sometimes the only time you find out about a planning board public hearing, it appears that the only thing that's done, that's not even posted on the website. It's just in the Camden Herald.
I would tell you, if you went to the planning board's website today, that the ordinances should be there. And they were there the other day, these, these drafts.
Is it, do you think it's a good idea to have the planning board chair come and have a chat in one of our agenda items to just discuss the process of the planning board?
Oh, no, I don't.
I don't think so.
I think this is definitely a town level thing.
I don't think that, that's a town level thing. I agree. But if you go to the planning, and it's probably not a good location for it right now, right? Because you have to go, you have to find where the planning board is. It's not even under the planning and development, right? You go to planning and code enforcement there. Yep. And go down to planning board. They should be there. Yeah, I don't know where the heck they went. They were all there just last week.
I was.
And then you go to.
Let's.
I understand that. I understand that. I understand that.
And I said the same thing a year ago. And it was the same, the same response.
I think we got 18s up. 19s are about done. I'm just being honest with you. Jeannie has been.
It can't be like that. It's for people to really follow along.
I understand. There's been an issue and we're getting to a point.
I usually don't do this in a, in a meeting, but they're just little side comments and friendly emails. It just doesn't seem like it matters. But this, I think it's a very good.
Minutes are about done.
All right.
And they'll all be posted.
But it's March of 2020.
I understand.
This should be done current. You had made a motion to accept in second. Okay, okay. We have a discussion. Good point, Allison. Any other discussion on this, on this site plan modification?
I think it's a great thing.
Okay. All those in favor? Those in favor? Four zero. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
The, the second portion of our public hearing is not to do with an ordinance. It has to do with the application from the Blue Harbor House Inn at 67 Elm Street for a class five bed and breakfast liquor license.
Are we skipping over all the other?
No, I'm gonna go back.
I think we were just sticking with the hearings.
I'm sticking, so the hearing should always be in.
Those are set dates.
Any, any comments on that or motion?
Yes. Public about it?
Good point. Anybody from the public who would like to speak to this application for the Blue Harbor House Inn? Not seeing any hands. I'll close public hearing and revert to select board.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application from the Blue Harbor House Inn at 67 Elm Street for a class five bed and breakfast liquor license.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Four zero. With that, I'll close the public hearing and revert back to the select board agenda items, which would now be items six and seven. Basically to set a date for public hearings for two zoning ordinances. That's one is accessory apartments, amend Article 3 definition, Article 8, Sections 2, 3, and 4. And the BTR to B1, amending numerous articles of zoning ordinance, amend the town's zoning map. This is a zoning change to eliminate BTR zoning district and replace it with B1. I would propose that that public hearing date would be May 17th.
March 17th.
I'm sorry, May 17th. That'll work. At March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, which will be our next select board meeting. Have a motion?
Second.
Jeremy, any comments before I make a motion?
No comments at all. I described these to you the last time we met. And the next one below, we can talk about if you want to, but there's a public hearing on demo review later.
I make a motion, we, we schedule a public hearing for accessory apartments to amend Article 3 definition and Article 8 Sections 2, 3, and 4.
Second.
For March 17th.
Yeah.
Those in favor? Four zero. BTR.
And I make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for moving the BTR zone to, or transferring the BTR zone to B1. Amend numerous articles in the zoning ordinance and amend the town zoning map to eliminate the BTR zoning district and replace it with the B1.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Four zero. Then we have to set a date for the public hearing on the cemetery ordinance amendment.
Was this, did we just do demolition review also?
No, demolition.
We're not setting that public hearing yet because the planning board's hearing is tomorrow night.
So it'll likely be the first meeting.
Which was just there for informational purposes.
Yeah, would likely be the first meeting in April.
Correct.
Okay. Setting the public hearing date on cemetery ordinance amendment. Anybody have any questions on that one?
I, I.
17th.
Make a motion that we set the date, March 17th, for a public hearing on the cemetery ordinance amendments.
Cool. Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
I thought there was supposed to be something in there about the, the tomb allow, it just seems so non-substantive. I.
What's in the packet?
Sure we have the most recent draft? She, yes, it seems.
Do we want to amend it and put it at the first?
No, no, no. No, no, no.
If we amend it, let's go back. Does it have to go, where's it gone? Where's it gone? Where's this, where's this, this ordinance just comes directly to us?
Just us.
Just to you guys. This is not a.
I mean, amend the timing to.
I'm not concerned about it at all. I'm the liaison. No, no.
Okay. So we'll set it for March 17th, okay?
Yes.
As I read it, a couple of changes, the main one being that the cemetery up on Burnson Road is now has two sides.
Right.
Yeah, reading it, it seems like it. But I just thought that there was, that there were some other things that we discussed in the, I thought, there was something with the, with the tomb over on Mountain View. But it just doesn't, seems like there's supposed to be something that we actually needed to do.
We have two choices. We can.
I think we should just move forward if there's a problem.
Did I have to hear a motion?
It's very benign as, and I, I'm not concerned about.
Okay, we can always modify it, Allison. Those in favor of saying the date for March 13th?
17th.
17th.
17th, I'm all right.
I think we voted on already.
All right, I thought we did. Okay. With that, we'll move on to, I'm confused. I get confused easily.
Struggle bus.
We, item, second item eight, not in addition to, I made this already on there, is to update energy efficiency performance contracting, basically to authorize or not Audra to sign a letter of intent with Siemens, our current performance, proposed contractor.
Yes. So what you have in your packet is just the sort of preliminary assessment that Siemens undertook for a number of town buildings. It didn't include the public library. And they have expressed interest in becoming involved in this project as well, which I, I think overall is going to make it a better project. And sort of based on this preliminary assessment, they've, you know, they've determined there's a number of different options for, you know, sort of long-term energy efficiency improvements to our buildings and facilities. You know, this is only sort of a broad overview. The next step from here, if we determine that we want to move forward with Siemens, is that they do a much more comprehensive audit of all the buildings that are included in this report, as well as the public library. And they'll come up with a few different options for the, for the town in terms of, you know, what our projects could entail and what the, what the likely cost of the projects are going to be and financing options. It's, you know, there's a way to do it so it's completely cost neutral for the town. However, you know, it'd be sort of less work that we would be undertaking, less energy efficiency upgrades. If we, you know, put some funding into these projects over, you know, a period of, usually it lasts for about 15 to 17 years, we'll see more benefits in terms of energy efficiency and, and performance improvement of the buildings. So, you know, it's a, a number of different options. We don't really have to make a decision at this point in terms of the exact project that we're going to do.
Turn your mic up.
Oh, whoop, I'm sorry. We won't have to make any decisions in terms of the exact project that we're going to move forward with. However, if we do sign a letter of intent with Siemens, we are committing to them undertaking a lot of engineering work. So if we, you know, for example, decide that we don't want to move forward with any sort of project, we would be on the hook for, you know, the, the fees for them to perform some of the engineering and, and design work that they're going to be doing for this stage.
Right. Right. There, there, I'm just trying to find that, the bar chart that talks about the process. My thought is, it's explaining what the various steps are so people understand where we're at in the scheme. Is it at the very end? It's a bar chart. It's a horizontal bar chart that shows the process. It must be at the very end. And I'll try to find it. Hold on one second and I'll point it out to Allison.
While you're looking for that.
Go ahead. Oh, go ahead, Mark.
I sat in on, at the last presentation that Siemens made. And for the people that are not aware of this, it's a modern, efficient, cost-effective way to save energy and save money at the same time and without having to put out substantial funds and also take a lot of town time to do it. It's, it's remarkable opportunity. And adding the library into the process because their library's going through some challenges, bringing them into this whole process will really save them time and money as well. I, I think it's an absolutely great solution. Very excited about it.
Page 76, Bob, of the whole, the overall document.
Page 76 of the whole document. I just wanted to just briefly show what Audra's referring to in terms of what this process is, so people can understand a bit and where we are in the process. That's it. Thank you, Allison. As you can see from, we are here on your left-hand side. The preliminary analysis, basically what an ESCO energy service company does, like Siemens and others, they commit and they, for free, they walk, they do a walkthrough of our various facilities. The snowbowl, this building, public safety and public works, I think was limited to date. And what they do at that stage is extract some information to determine whether or not you have a reasonable number of projects you've spent the time on. They may say, you know what? Don't waste your time. It's just not worth it. What they came back with was, and they don't have all the data, they're still missing data on energy, like fuel for this building. They didn't have all that yet. But they've already determined that there's a potential in Camden for town of Camden, those facilities, excluding at this moment, the library and wastewater treatment plant, the prob, no less than 15% energy savings. Nominally, that's, that's not a bad number to start with because we usually happens to get more data, to get more information, and then we start looking at other facilities, not the least of which, two I just mentioned. That number will typically rise into the twenties typically. You can go as high as 30. It's not going to happen here. We've done some stuff already to stunt energy demands. But where we are, the preliminary analysis is, preliminary analysis is done. So the next step would be a letter of intent to do a detailed analysis, which is the orange bar up here. And the detailed analysis, they start getting down to really putting stuff on paper. And they, they do have a modest financial of, they said an average of $20,000. If you decide, oh, you did all this work, we don't want anything. It's never happened in the history of, of Siemens that would that occurs. What will come out of that is a matrix, basically showing what options you have, what the cost would be to do it, what the guaranteed energy savings would be for which we fund the project for a 15 or 17-year basis. We wouldn't even probably be paying a dime on this, all this work until probably FY '22, probably. Not that the work wouldn't be done, it's just we wouldn't start paying it until then. Of course, the implementation phase is actually the guarantee phase in which they would actually change out something, whatever might be the reapproved, and they'll monitor the energy savings every year. And if we don't achieve the energy savings, it's, we are guaranteed those energy savings. So they eat the difference. This is nothing new in the industry. It's been around for quite a, it's been honed by a number of large companies like Siemens and many others, actually. I think we're very fortunate to get Siemens' attention because these people are busier than heck these days and makes the construction industry look like a, like a light load. But where we are is the, the prove for Audra to execute a letter of intent, which we have discussed would include the library and the wastewater treatment plant.
You should name the other buildings as well.
Okay, and public safety, public works, the town hall opera house building here. And did I miss one? Snowball. Thank you, thank you. And they have identified already savings potentials at all those sites. A potential, again, some very, very interesting ones, I thought, especially Snowball. You know, that was, I had thought about that, Allison. That's not a bad idea.
That's a, that's a.
Well, we do, no, it's, it is a town building. We own it. I don't see any reason why that couldn't be added to it. I, I had thought about that. It's potential energy savings is what it is. We'll, we'll figure it out. But, you know, they've, they've looked across the spectrum of, you know, what we're using, how we're using it, where it's coming from, the utilization of geothermal in some potential places, the, the solar in some places, systems efficiency. And this building is a bit of a challenge because they haven't got all the data yet. So they really need to dig into this one a lot more than we have to date. But that's what they will do in the detailed analysis phase. So.
Is there any, sorry, Mark had his hand up and I didn't.
Marko.
I was gonna say, they also, it also includes modernizing the HVAC systems.
Okay.
Which is, could, could make huge energy safety and actually make the, the buildings.
Oh, there's no question. And that's typically, remember Siemens would cut its teeth on controls. They're one of the worldwide, thanks, Tom, one of the worldwide experts on controls.
And one of the things I mentioned, one of the questions I asked in the meeting, and it pertains to the discussion we had at the beginning about Route 1 North. and it pertains to the discussion we had at the beginning about Route 1 North, is I said, will they have the employees to pull off what they need to do? And they said yes. And that's important, they have the clout and the manpower to do the job they need to do, and it, within the scope of what they ask of you.
Excellent question, I did respond because Siemens, Siemens worldwide does literally into billions of this kind of work, including just in the United States. And, yeah, they, they command some serious debt financing at very, very low interest rates, and they command resources because they know they're just, they're captive subcontractors. So, again, back to the issue at hand, the next step would be to allow Audra to, I'm sorry, did I miss anything? I'm so sorry.
No, that's fine. Is there anything that we could do to bundle in Midco Solid Waste? Because it seems like something that maybe Midco Solid Waste might not be big enough to do it on their own, but if they were bundled in with us, or we extended the offer?
The answer is yes.
There's a lot over there.
We would have to extend it to Midco Solid Waste, of course, that's a four talent, as you well know, that's involved, but they, they won't refuse any portion of our world, and they're, they were very welcoming to the wastewater because they're very excited about the fact that where it is in design right now.
They're going to make sure to do that, that massive storage garage thing that we have too, right? That counts as wastewater, right?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. But they're talking about energy generation there. And by the way, there's a potential in my mind that if they can get together with the wastewater gang, they may be able to reduce some of the costs that are being spent on the project by our wastewater design team, transfer that dollars to performance contracting. So, that would, because we're having a challenge with budget there also, I'm not saying it's guaranteed, but that would be one of the objectives to have out there, and some also some renewable energy sources at wastewater.
But maybe now would be the time with Midco Solid Waste, just to see if we could bundle it in, we've got Dave...
I think we should bounce it off of, I think we should bounce it off of the board.
Signing the letter of intent, because I asked them this because, you know, we didn't include the library in the preliminary analysis, and I said, well, if we sign the letter of intent, will that exclude the library? And they said, no, absolutely not. You can bring in any additional facilities that you, you know, as you go through the process. So, we can certainly bring in Midco Solid Waste.
We should consider, you said in the yacht club, and we should consider Midco Solid Waste, and see what they say. Mark?
Do we need a motion to authorize Audra? Then I'd like to make a motion to authorize Audra to sign the letter of intent with Siemens for energy efficiency performance contracting.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor? Four zero, thank you very much.
This is great.
Yeah, it's just, it's exciting, it's, yeah, it does.
Really encouraging.
It does, it really does. Well, I was very happy that a company as busy as Siemens would even take this on, and I have to say, in relative terms, their response to this has been quite good.
I think they're happy we're moving forward quickly.
I think that's what they're really happy about, it's true. With that, and also...
You're so good at that.
Does anybody have any...
Not always, but this time, yes.
Last item on the agenda would be to, if anybody has any questions on general fund or snowballs, financials that were in the packet, I did have a few, but Jody clarified them for me, Mark.
I'll just make a couple of comments. These next few weeks, in comparing last year's income and expenses with this year's income, right now, we're in pretty good shape at the snowball, but we're sort of, it doesn't look like we're going to get those main snowstorms, those March snowstorms like we had last year. So, we're going to have to watch very carefully the numbers over the next month or year.
We are, we are, we are definitely doing it.
We'll do as we're watching. We always say we're just going to watch them carefully, what is...
Well, I mean, there's, you know, reducing to sort of skeleton crew, closing more days a week, all those sorts of decisions. I mean, this is kind of the time of year when you're sort of damned if you do, damned if you don't. You have to close or reduce staff to save money if you want to hit the budget targets, but if you do that, you know, members of the public in season pass holders are typically not happy with that decision.
I just wanted to point, it's just something we should be, you know, looking at carefully.
It's more about just making a conscious choice as to what, what you're going to do.
So, I feel like maybe we should try to make a couple of conscious choices ahead of time, if, it always seems like...
Pre-planning?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's always somebody upset, and sometimes it's me, or sometimes it's Mark, or we think we should, the risk aversion and the, like, for example, closing as a strategy to save money. You know, it's very hotly debated among town, whether that's a good strategy or a bad strategy, and trying to understand what the cost of staying open is versus the cost of, of being closed, but then still having, there are some costs even just being closed.
Correct.
So, that we could better understand, okay, well, when the snowball stays open, a few extra days even...
Was the delta...
Yeah, what are we, what is the financial cost of that? Sometimes I feel like we're a little too risk averse, and that we shoot ourselves in the foot because people end up thinking that we're going to be closed, and it's just, and when, at the end of the day, it turns out we've talked, we're talking about $8,000 to have been open for the week, or something like that. I think, you know, it'd just be good to know.
I think, I think that it's important, I've had tremendous amount of complaints the last few years, that we've continued to have really good skiing snow, and they've closed because they haven't planned ahead. And I've asked for the last couple of years to make sure that if we get to this point, that there is a plan in place to maybe cut down on the staffing, but allow the snowball to be open when the skiing is still good. And the one thing I'll say, even though we have not had a really good natural snow winter, the snowmaking and the way they've positioned it and, and used it at the snowball, I've heard nothing but incredibly strong support for the work they've done and how well they've done it, and how good the skiing is, even when you see no snow on the ground here, the skiing has been really terrific. They've done a tremendous job of managing the snowmaking, and we should take advantage of that, like Allison said, you know, for a matter of $5,000 or $8,000, if we have great skiing based on the work that they've done, we shouldn't just shut it down.
I totally agree with that, and I feel bad for the staff at the snowball sometimes because I think that they're caught between a rock and a hard place, not, you know, they, they get all of this feedback or all these questions about how much money is the snowball losing or making, or, and so they, there's this high degree of pressure to make sure that the snowball doesn't, you know, lose any money, but that we should show some leadership and say, you know, if, we shouldn't just close, you know, I think they're, they're closing sometimes to do the right thing, and...
Well, I would, I would say over the, ever since I've been here, we've kept open until the very end of March, and we realize the snowball, the snowball budget only goes until the end of March, and then Parks and Rec takes over.
Transfers over, right.
Right, and also the Parks and Rec, those full-time staff that are shared between the snowball and the Parks Department, they've got work to do, a lot of work to do in the spring to get the parks ready to be...
Fundamentally, we're, our next board meeting is going to be March 17th, got it right this time, and I think between now and then, we're going to know, we're going to absolutely know where this thing is going, and then you, you're really almost there already. So, it's, this potential of closing by the end of March is probably very limited at this point because it wouldn't do us a lot of good.
I'd say, I mean, at this point, everybody's very committed to keeping the season open until the very end of the...
I think that's where it looks right now.
Well, that's not always set, or sometimes it's on the...
That's, that's our current objective, I think it should be.
I think that that's kind of their goal every single year, is to stay open till March 31st.
Yeah, and that's never been, I don't think that's very clear either.
And as I discussed with Audra, going forward, we should, done it last year, every year when we wind up with whatever reserve is positive or negative, it has to be carried forward. If, if it's a negative, a few thousand dollars, we'll carry it forward to next year, and we'll see what next year does, and we'll be able to make decisions about if we go substantially negative, what we have to do.
Well, I mean, and I don't think that's, I don't think that's a risk that we run this year, given where we're at at this point in time. You know, maybe, maybe we do finish a little in the red, but it's not going to be so significant that we're going to need to close early.
It'll be like two years ago.
Right.
Let me just clarify that, my saying that we should watch closely is not to say, let's, let's make sure we save the money and close, it's to make sure that we take advantage of the skiing, as long as the skiing is great, we should take advantage of it. And to go back to what I said when I opened the meeting with, the one thing I did see from the Lost Valley tubing hill, is that it was hugely financial beneficial to that hill.